Welcome to the June 12, 2024 Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop. The workshop is now called to order. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Wustel?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Okay, I'll now read into the record the memorandum of absence from Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Hagan said, "Please be advised that I will be unable to attend today's BOCC workshop as I have a prior commitment." Please read this reason of absence into the record. And also, we have Commissioner Kemp will not be joining us today, and she said Commissioner Kemp is not attending the CPA workshop due to a last-minute scheduling conflict. And she also said, "Please read this reason on to my absence into the record." And during this afternoon's workshop, Planning Commission staff will provide presentations to the board regarding pending applications for amendments to the comprehensive plan. No action will be taken this afternoon. These amendments will be scheduled for future public hearings of the Board of County Commissioners. I will now request that Ms. Melissa Leinhart introduce the first item.
Thank you, ma'am. We have quite a few items on the agenda this evening, or sorry, this afternoon. So I'll go ahead and we'll get started with item A1, which is HCCPA 24-23, and that will be presented by Ms. Katrina Corcoran.
Good afternoon. Go ahead and share my screen. Okay, is everyone able to see my presentation?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. As Melissa mentioned, my name is Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here today to present the local functional classification map. This amendment is publicly initiated. It is a text amendment for the adoption of an existing non-adopted map. And although it is a text amendment, there are no policy changes as a part of this amendment. If you're getting any kind of deja vu from this amendment, it was previously in the January 2023 cycle. However, it was withdrawn due to 2023 Senate Bill 250, which prevented Hillsborough County from initiating amendments that could be seen as regulatory or burdensome. In this case, this map is considered regulatory. Some background on this amendment. The mobility section has a map series which includes map seven, the local functional classification map. As I mentioned previously, it is currently non-adopted. The graphic you can see on the right was the previous 2008 map that Hillsborough County's Community and Infrastructure Planning Department updated in coordination with various stakeholders. You may be wondering, what is functional classification? So functional classification of a road is the group of roads to which a road belongs. A list of typical roadway characteristics is considered when determining the road's functional classification, and that can include posted speed, number of lanes, traffic generated, et cetera. The amount of mobility and access offered by different classifications varies based on type, and there are four main functional classifications: principal arterial, arterial, collector, and local. Arterial roads generally provide the fastest method of travel, but they typically have the lowest accessibility from neighboring roads. They're designed with long-distance travel in mind. Principal arterials include interstates and highways, and other arterials are considered more minor arterials. Collector roads are the second most common and are used as a connection between local roads and arterial roads. They provide less mobility than arterials at lower speeds, however, they typically provide a balance between access and mobility. Local roads are the most common roads but are also the slowest for travel. They're designed specifically to have high accessibility and to connect to collector and arterial roads. A road's functional classification can have an impact from a comprehensive plan or land development code standpoint. This includes allowing or directing certain uses to be located on certain types of roadways, for example, commercial locational criteria requirements, or encouraging higher-density residential on arterial roadways, and LDC considerations for transportation, safety, and access. This slide shows the proposed changes for the local functional classification map. Again, this map is currently non-adopted and would be adopted as a part of this amendment. We're currently coordinating with the jurisdictions on this map as well. I'm assuming you may see some changes as a result of that coordination when this comes to hearing. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Any questions from anybody? I don't see any hands up at this time. So, okay, we're going to the next item. A2?
Yes, ma'am. Item A2 is HCCPA 24-24, and that will be presented by Ms. Sofia Garantiva.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just give me a moment to share my screen. Again, Sofia Garantiva here from the Planning Commission to present on HCCPA 24-24, the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan update. Just a little bit of background on the amendment. This is a publicly initiated text amendment. In September of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners asked staff to update the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. The community plan was originally adopted in 2008, and the boundaries generally include Palm River/Tampa by Pas Canal to the north, US Highway 301 to the east, Tampa City Limits to the west, and the limits of the River View Community Plan to the south, as shown on the map. The community plan area also includes multiple established neighborhoods such as Palm River, Clearmount City, and Progress Village. The adopted community plan established a Vision Nine goals and over 100 strategies to meet those goals. The community plan process kicked off in the fall/winter of 2022 with the presentation of a community plan implementation status report prepared by county staff, and of course, the request by the BOCC to initiate the update. We started community engagement with an open house and began gathering data and coordinating with county departments. Throughout 2023 and 2024, community engagement continued with regularly scheduled stakeholder meetings. Staff drafted documents and presented them as they were ready to the community. And in spring/summer 2024, we held the final community engagement meetings, had technical meetings with county staff, and finalized the policy. We also initiated the comprehensive plan amendment process. We had numerous community engagement opportunities throughout the process that were open to the public, including, again, the open houses, online engagement via surveys, we had a project website, and held virtual meetings. There are also monthly office hours held in the community. A community plan advisory committee, or CPAC, was also created. This was a voluntary group comprised of community members and stakeholders that provided input on draft policies and met monthly. Notices for the community meetings were given through a combination of mailed postcards, emails, sign postings, social media posts, and also online on the project website. Staff also attended events in the community when possible to bring awareness to the effort and to gather input. And some of the key insights gathered from the engagement process, there was a perceived opinion by the community that numerous adopted goals and strategies were not fully implemented, including some related to code enforcement and infrastructure improvements. There's a fear of the area's history and sense of community being lost to new development and changing demographics. It was also expressed that the name of the community plan is a point of tension as it singles out just one neighborhood. There does not appear to be outright opposition to development, but there is the desire for there to be a balance between new development and infrastructure demands of existing neighborhoods. There's also a desire for better communication within the community amongst the different neighborhoods and with the community and the county in general. So based on the input received from the community and in collaboration with county staff, we are proposing four main changes to the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. The first being the renaming of the community plan to Palm River Progress Village Community Plan to recognize the northern and southernmost neighborhoods within the plan boundary. Also updating the vision statement and concept map to include neighborhood names and reflect updates to the strategies and goals. To help address some of the implementation concerns, we are proposing to combine related goals to focus efforts, going from nine adopted goals to five proposed goals, and reprioritizing them. We're also proposing to clarify strategies by relocating certain action items to a separate non-adopted report that will accompany the community plan while keeping many of the existing strategies in place. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
If no questions, Ms. Leinhart, do you want to continue on throughout the list? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item A3, we have HCCPA 23-09, and Ms. Bren Delfinay will be presenting that.
Good afternoon, everyone. I will go ahead and share my screen. All right. Thank you so much. As stated, my name is Bren Delfinay, and with the Planning Commission staff, I'm here to discuss HCCPA 23-09, 1,005 North Kingsway Road. This item was originally scheduled for the April 2023 cycle, was continued, and is back before you all today. It is a privately initiated small-scale amendment for one parcel located on approximately 14.47 acres. The applicant is now requesting to go from residential four to community mixed-use 12. The site is located on the east side of the county within the Sefner Mango Community Plan as well as the urban service area within the urban service area. As you can see on this map, the plan amendment site is in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of East US Highway 92 and North Kingsway Road. Directly to the west, across North Kingsway Road, is Burnett Middle School. To the north of the school is Higginbotham Park, and further in the northwest corner is Interstate 4. South of the school are some light commercial uses. The amendment site is currently vacant and surrounded by residential uses to the north, east, and south. The site is currently designated as residential four with public quasi-public to the west, residential one in the north corner, and other residential four designations surrounding it. The blue line in the corner is the urban services area boundary. Beyond the boundary, you will find some agricultural estate uses. The applicant is requesting to change the designation from residential four to community mixed-use 12. The existing residential four category allows for up to 57 dwelling units or 157,579 square feet. The proposed community mixed-use 12 designation would allow for up to 173 dwelling units or 315,146 square feet. Additionally, the proposed amendment would potentially allow for the consideration of commercial-intensive and manufacturing uses under the CMU 12 designation. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
No other, any questions? Okay, Ms. Leinhart?
All right, moving on here. The next item we have is item A4, HCCPA 24-20, and Ms. Alexis Myers will be sharing her screen and giving that presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just give me one moment to share my screen. Okay. One moment. Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 24-20 located at 16011 North Nebraska Avenue. This is a small-scale privately initiated map amendment that is approximately 2.11 acres. The applicant is proposing to change the future land use category from residential four to suburban mixed-use six. Here we have the general location map. The site is in the urban service area and also within the limits of the Lutz Community Plan. It is also within the Chapman Manor neighborhood. Here we have the aerial. The site is outlined in pink. The blue dotted line indicates the Tampa service area, while the blue solid line indicates the urban service area. The site is north of Nebraska Avenue and Interstate 275 and south of Hannah Road. It is also, I'm sorry, also in the FEMA flood zone X, and currently has light industrial uses on the site. There are also single-family uses to the north and across I-275 to the east. There is also a group home and a mobile home park to the west. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is residential four. Other future land use categories shown in this map include residential one and residential two to the north, and then we have office commercial 20 to the south. Again, the applicant is proposing to change the future land use designation to suburban mixed-use six. Here we have the impacts. As far as the existing conditions currently under res four, the site could consider up to eight dwelling units or 175,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed use of SMU six, the applicant could possibly develop up to 12 dwelling units or 175,000 of non-residential, I'm sorry, square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in an increase of density, and it will introduce suburban-scale commercial and residential uses. This concludes my presentation for HCCPA 24-20, and I'm here to answer any questions.
If no questions, Ms. Leinhart?
Yes, ma'am. Our next item is item A5, which is HCCPA 24-21, and Ms. Jillian Massey is the presenter for that item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I will share my screen. Good afternoon. I'm Jillian Massey with your Planning Commission staff. I'll be briefing on HCCPA 24-21, which is 9317 Gibsonton Drive. This request is a privately initiated small-scale math amendment. It is made up of six parcels that total approximately 11.94 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from suburban mixed-use six to community mixed-use 12. The location of this plan amendment request is in the southeastern portion of the county. It's part of the April 2024 cycle of plan amendments, located in the urban service area and within the limits of the Gibsonton Community Plan and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. It's located on Gibsonton Drive and bound by Old Gibsonton Drive to the north and Interstate 75 is to the east. Surrounding uses mainly include single-family residential and the Alafire River to the north, single-family to the west and southwest, I-75 to the east, and single-family further east. To the south is light commercial and strip retail, which includes a large Walmart plaza. Further south is also single-family residential. The site is in the suburban mixed-use six land use category. It allows for consideration of residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, research, corporate park uses, light industrial, and mixed-use projects. Neighborhood commercial uses are subject to locational criteria in this category. Surrounding land use categories include suburban mixed-use six to the north and south, residential four to the west, and residential six to the southwest. There is one pocket of community mixed-use 12 in the northeast quadrant of I-75 and Gibsonton The request is to change the site to community mixed-use 12, which allows for consideration of the same uses as suburban mixed-use six, but introduces consideration of community-scale retail-commercial. Commercial uses in this category are not subject to locational criteria. The slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under the suburban mixed-use six, the site can be considered for up to 71 dwelling units or approximately 260,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The floor-area ratio in this category ranges from .25 to .50 depending on the proposed use. The change to community mixed-use 12 would allow for consideration of up to 143 dwelling units or approximately 260,000 of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will increase the potential residential density and introduce consideration of community-scale retail-commercial uses. And I just And I just wanted to note that the applicant has submitted a rezoning application, and they would like to request that it be heard concurrently with this application. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
No questions, Ms. Leinhardt?
Okay, thank you very much. Item A seven, we have HCCPA twenty-four dash twenty-five, and Ms. Melissa Dickens will be presenting this item. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. One moment, please. All right. Again, this is HCCPA twenty-four dash twenty-five. It is at nineteen-one-one Rebecca Road. This is a privately initiated small-scale math amendment, just over two acres. The request is to modify it from the existing future land use of residential one to residential two. This slide shows the general location. It's in the north-northwest area of the county, the rural area. It is within the boundaries of the Lutz Community Plan. This aerial shows the general location, or the more precise location, excuse me, of the parcel. It is on the north side of Rebecca Road to the east of Simmons Road in the Lutz area. This shows the future land use map as it is today, currently residential one. You can see there is a great deal of residential one within this general area with some residential two in the subdivision to the south and then also on the west side of Rebecca Road. Excuse me, that was the west side of Simmons Road, I apologize. The proposed future land use map would modify the parcel to residential two. And in terms of impacts, currently, the parcel would be eligible for up to two units and approximately twenty-three thousand square feet, provided it would meet locational criteria. Under the proposed change, it would receive up to four units, and the FAR available for commercial if meeting locational criteria is the same. In terms of impacts, this would be an increase in density in the rural area. I also want to note that the residential and non-residential maximums that I noted on this slide do not account for the application of the environmentally sensitive lands credit, which is outlined in Flute Policy thirteen-point-three. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant has not requested a concurrent rezoning. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, no questions, Ms. Leinhardt?
Yes, ma'am, and I do apologize, but I had my screen, my little blurb over item A six, so I accidentally skipped that one. So we'll go backward once, and we'll have Ms. Carla Yanos present HCCPA twenty-four dash twenty-two. Thank you.
All right, um, you may, can you confirm if you guys can see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
This is HCCPA twenty-four dash twenty-two. The property is located at four-twenty-one Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. This is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment on approximately four-point-two acres in size. The request is going from residential six to suburban mixed-use six. Now, the general location for the subject site is located into the eastern, almost northeastern part of the county. And it was originally part of the April twenty twenty-four cycle, so this is brand-new. And it is within the urban service area and within the Sefner Mango Community Plan. Now, here you see the aerial of the subject site. You do have single-family located to the north. You also have two-family currently up to the north as well. Over to the east of the property, you will see a self-storage facility that is categorized as light industrial use per the property appraiser. Then you have to the south, you have some public quasi-public institutional uses. And to the west, you will find some single-family as well as some heavy commercial or light commercial uses along Parsons Avenue located off of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Thanks. Now, the adopted future land use is residential six. That allows you six dwelling units to the acre, zero-point-two-five floor area ratio. And the request again is suburban mixed-use six. So as you can observe on this proposed future land use map, to the north, you have residential four future land use category. And then you see the residential nine over to the west of South Parsons Avenue and then north of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. And then along the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard area, you'll see that there is a little bit more yellow area, and that is actually residential six future land use category. Now, further to the south, you're going to see residential four as well. And then further over to the east, you'll start to see the public quasi-public property that is located south of the CSX Railroad. Under the existing future land use category, you'll, you can, the property can achieve up to twenty-five dwelling units or forty-six thousand square feet of non-residential use. Under the proposed category, they can reach the same amount of dwelling units, which is twenty-five. However, their non-residential square footage does change a little bit depending on the use. So overall, they can achieve up to ninety-two thousand non-residential uses. And that category is usually dependent upon the use, and I believe the maximum floor area ratio is zero-point-five-zero in that category. Now, the proposed amendment will likely increase the non-residential intensity, and it does introduce a consideration of light industrial and mixed uses. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. I don't see any hands, Ms. Leinhardt?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So that brings us to item A eight, so I'll go ahead and introduce myself because I'll be presenting this item. HTV, would you mind sharing the PowerPoint for HCCPA twenty-three dash fifteen? Okay, great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Melissa Leinhardt with Planning Commission staff. I'm here today to present to you HCCPA twenty-three dash fifteen, which is the Energy Industrial Park Secondary Uses Plan Amendment. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated text amendment that applies to one geographical area of unincorporated Hillsborough County. Specifically, this is the three-thousand-acre site that is south of State Road sixty. The applicant is requesting to modify existing language under Energy Industrial Parks section of the future land use element that pertains specifically to this area. Next slide, please. This request is part of the April twenty twenty-four cycle of plan amendments. The site is located in the urban service area, and it is not located within the limits of a community plan. The site is bordered generally by State Road sixty to the north, Dover Road to the west, Turkey Creek Road to the east, and Durant Road to the south. Next slide, please. The Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category is a unique category in that it applies to a select geographical area of unincorporated Hillsborough County. This category, along with the text that supports the category's vision and contains the requirements for the Energy Industrial Park, were created through a privately initiated text amendment in twenty-ten. And then, of course, there was a subsequent map amendment to the site at that time as well. The policies were written based on the topography of the site as well as the available energy-producing technology that was available at the time. Next slide, please. In twenty-ten, there was a large public outreach effort, and the language was heavily vetted with both the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners at that time. In twenty-twenty-two, there was a privately initiated text amendment that modified the language to allow for one energy-producing output rather than the two that was originally approved, so long as the output was doubled to achieve the vision of the Energy Industrial Park vision. This amendment was approved and is in effect today. Next slide, please. Regarding the impacts, the current language states that all other uses beyond energy-producing uses, such as commercial, industrial, office uses, they're ancillary, and the focus is really on the renewable energy production. The current language limits the ancillary industrial, commercial, and office uses to a seven-hundred-acre portion of the site that's in the northwest. The current language also limits direct access to major arterial roadways, which in this case would be State Road sixty. The proposed language would allow up to thirty percent of the allowable commercial, office, and industrial uses prior to any of those renewable energy-producing uses that I mentioned. It would also eliminate language specifying those uses needed to be in the seven-hundred acres in the northwest corner where those commercial, industrial, and office uses are permitted per the language today. The proposed language would also allow direct access off of Turkey Creek Road. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions you may have. And just as a reminder how these workshops have been working with concurrent rezonings is that if an applicant does request a rezoning, we mention it at this stage, and then it's up to the board to direct that rezoning to be concurrent or not. And I wanted to mention that you all received an email from the applicant, Chris McNeil of McNeil Engineering, regarding his desire to tie in his submitted rezoning that's in today along with this plan amendment. So he would like to see these concurrent, and if you concur, that we would need that direction today.
Okay. I see Commissioner Cohen has his hand up. You have a question, Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Cohen?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll make a motion to go ahead and have that be a companion rezoning.
Okay, thank you, sir.
If I may, this is Ms. Lundgren Bailey, and I wanted to remind the board that we do not take action during workshops. However, the board may accept or may direct through consensus, through statements of consensus, the concurrent rezoning and CPA process to be...
Thank you, Ms. Lundgren. I'll rephrase that. I would concur with staff's suggestion that we have this one be a companion rezoning and hope that the rest of the board would concur.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Ms. Leinhardt?
Yeah, are there any other questions? I know this one has garnered...
I didn't see any other hands up, but really, I see the big presentation, so I can't see everybody's...
Okay, we can unshare the screen. There you go, perfect. Any other hands up?
I don't see any.
It looks like Mr. Gormley has his hand up.
Mr. Gormley? I can't, we can't hear you, Mr. Gormley?
Thank you. I'm sorry, my apologies. Yes, just for clarity, we'll take that, that request for concurrent rezoning with no objection from the board. And unless there is any objection, we'll proceed with having those two scheduled together and come back to the board concurrently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gormley. Ms. Leinhardt?
Yes, ma'am. So the next, the next several items we have on the agenda, the remaining eight items, they are viewed, they're basically four coupled amendments. There's one map amendment and then one text amendment, which is to the urban service area boundary. There are four separate requests, but each one of them has both a map and a text amendment component. So I would ask that for items A nine and A ten, which will be presented by Ms. Andrea Papendrew, if questions and comments could wait until after she's finished with both items, that would be helpful. And then we'll do that for items A eleven and twelve together, thirteen and fourteen, and so on. But I'll remind everyone. Thank you. So I can turn it over to Ms. Papendrew at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. Believe my screen is sharing. So this is HCCPA twenty-four dash eleven, one-five-five-four-zero West Lake Drive, Urban Service Area Extension. This is a privately initiated text amendment. The site is approximately five hundred and forty-one point eight-one acres. And there is an accompanying map amendment, HCCPA twenty-four dash ten, with this application, which you'll see in the next presentation. So this is the subject site is outlined in a dashed pink, and then the blue line on the map shows the existing urban service area boundary. So the site is east of West Lake Drive and south of County Road six-seventy-two. And the natural preservation portion indicated on the aerial before you is not included within, on this site is not included in this application. So the text amendment would bring five hundred and forty-one point eight-one acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. So now I'll go ahead and go on to the accompanying map amendment portion. So this is HCCPA twenty-four dash ten, one-five-five-four-zero West Lake Drive. This is a privately initiated regular map amendment. The site is five hundred and fifty-one point two-four acres. And the request is to go from the current Wamama Village Residential Two and residential plan to future land use categories to residential four. The general location for the site, it is in the rural area. It is in the southwestern portion of the county, in the Wamama Village Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. So this is an aerial again of subject site with the blue line showing the urban service area boundary. Again, it is east of West Lake Drive and south of County Road six-seventy-two. A natural preservation is not included in the map portion of the application as well. Please note that the briefing packet maps had a small mistake. There's a small portion of the westernmost parcel that is part of the map amendment. That is within the urban service area line today, so that's not with the text amendment, but it is with the map amendment request. And that, that difference in about nine-point-four-three acres, that accounts for the difference in the acreage between the text and the map amendment. And we will have those updated correct maps for the public hearing packets. So the existing land use for the site today is agricultural. Within a quarter-mile of subject site is a mixture of single-family residential, vacant land, agricultural, public institutional, and HOA slash common property. And then to the northwest is one heavy industrial property. So the adopted future land use categories for the subject site are Wamama Village Residential Two. And then about zero-point-zero-four acres of the site is residential plan village two. North and east of the site are the natural preservation in the RP two categories. And then further north is a small pocket of office commercial twenty. South and west of the site is the Wamama Village Residential Two category. And then west of the site is the residential four future land use category. And the proposal before you today is to change to the residential four future land use category, not including the natural preservation portion. So for the impacts, the existing future land use categories allow for a maximum of one thousand one hundred and two dwelling units on site. Please note that WVR two and RP two are tiered land use categories. So the baseline for those categories starts at one unit per five acres. And if certain criteria are met, it allows up to the maximum two units per acre. And the maximum two units per acre is reflected in the one thousand one hundred and two dwelling unit count. And then the maximum FAR is point-two-five, approximately six million and three thousand square feet. However, the RP two category does allow up to a point-three-five FAR for the planned village concept. The planned amendment site is not in the downtown east area, and it's not eligible for commercial uses under the existing WVR two. Moving to the residential four category would allow up to two thousand two hundred and four dwelling units. The FAR would remain the same. And the proposed amendment, if approved, would remove the community commercial land use allowed in the RP two category. So that concludes my presentation, or both presentations. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Can you remember? Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I don't see any hands up at this time. Thank you very much, Ms. Leinhardt.
Yes, ma'am, we can move on to items A11 and A12. Again, there's one text amendment and one map, so we'd ask that any questions or comments will wait until Ms. Myers is finished presenting her items. So I will pass it over to Ms. Carla Yanoz, which will be followed by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis, can you share the presentation? Very well, thank you very much. So this is HCCPA 24-07. The property is located at 5711 Bishop Road, and this is an urban service area extension. Next slide. Privately, this is a privately initiated comprehensive plan text amendment. The procedures manual indicates that any type of urban service area extension needs to be processed as a text amendment versus a map amendment. So this is why it's coming before you as is. The property is 575 acres. That we will be expanding the urban service area extension boundary. If, obviously, if the board adopts it at a later time. This is associated with a comprehensive plan map amendment under HCCPA 23-19, which was submitted in the October 2023 cycle, just last year. Next slide. Now, the property that we are speaking of is the one in the middle. It's highlighted in yellow. The blue line that you see over to the northwest, that is right off of Bishop Road, that is the urban service area boundary line. Now, the other two properties that are highlighted in pink, we will be presenting on those as well after this one. But since they were all located within the same general vicinity and their borders do touch for the purpose of the urban service boundary extension, we wanted to show it geographically so you guys got a better picture. Next slide. All right, and that is it. I will glad to be, to answer any questions. If not, Alexis will hop on over to the map amendment portion.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners, Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 23-19, located at 5711 Bishop Road. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that is large in scale and a little over 408 acres. Currently, the future land use designation is Wamama Village Residential Two, and the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to residential four. Here we have the general location map. It is in the rural service area. This amendment is also within the limits of the Wamama Village and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. It is located east of Highway 301 and West Lake Drive, west of County Road 579, and south of Bishop Road and State Road 674. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has agricultural on vacant land, I'm sorry, agricultural as well as vacant land. The site also has wetlands, significant wildlife, and is also in the FEMA flood zone AE. There are single-family uses and agricultural to the west, northwest, and southwest. And there are public quasi-public institution uses and agricultural to the east, northeast, and southeast. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is Wamama Village Residential Two. Other future land use designations shown on this map include natural preservation to the east and south, and residential four and residential six, which are just within the urban service area to the north. The applicant again is proposing to change the future land use designation to residential four. Next are the impacts. As far as the existing conditions currently under WVR2, the site could consider up to 816 dwelling units or 4,445,951.4 square feet of non-residential uses. Standalone commercial uses are subject to commercial, commercial locational criteria and be limited to 40,000 square feet. Under the proposed future land use designation of residential four, the applicant could possibly develop up to 1,633 dwelling units or 4,440, I'm sorry, 4,445,951.4 square feet of non-residential uses. These numbers also depend on the wetland acreage. The proposed amendment will result in an increase of density, and it will also introduce suburban scale commercial and residential while eliminating community benefits. This concludes my presentation for HCCPA 23-19. Carla and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, no questions?
No questions, okay. All right, we can go ahead and move on to the next two items. We have items A13 and A14, and they will also be presented by Ms. Carla Yanoz and Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Thank you. This is HCCPA 24-09. The property is better known as Saffold Road and County Road 579. Again, this is an urban service area extension. Next slide. And this is a privately initiated comprehensive plan and text amendment on 638.77 acres. Now, the expansion of the urban service area is associated with a map amendment under HCCPA 24-38. Next slide. And then the, the property that we are referring to is the one located to the south. So this one's right off of Saffold Road. You have County Road 579 over to the east. So that's basically it. Again, once the HCCPA 2407, if it does get adopted, essentially it would align with 2409 for expanding the boundary. There are compact policies that will be describing in the staff report that kind of describes if they, if they have met the criteria or not. So stay tuned, and you'll have more information during your staff report. I'll turn it over to Alexis so she can describe the blue map change.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, Alexis Myers again with the Planning Commission. I'm here to present HCCPA 2408, located at Saffold Road and County Road 579. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that is large in scale and approximately 638.77 acres. Currently, the future land use designation is Wamama Village Residential Two, and the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to residential four. Here's the general location map. This amendment is in the rural service area. It is also within the limits of the Wamama Village and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. It is located west of County Road 579 and north of Saffold Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has agricultural and single-family uses. The site also has wetlands, significant wildlife, and is also in the FEMA flood zone AE. Single-family uses are also to the southwest. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is Wamama Village Residential Two. Other future land use designations shown in this map include natural preservation to the east and south and as well as residential four and residential six, which are just within the urban service area to the north. Again, the applicant is proposing to change the future land use designation to residential four. Next, we have the impacts. Overall, the proposed amendment will result in an increase of density, and it will also introduce suburban scale commercial and residential while eliminating community benefits. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2408, and Carla and I are happy to answer any questions.
This is Commissioner Wostel, Commissioner Spada have a question.
Yes, sure, thank you, Commissioner Wostel, go ahead.
Did you say that this introduces large-scale apartments?
No, sir, I said that it introduces suburban scale commercial and residential while eliminating community benefits.
Okay, perfect, all right, that's all I needed, Commissioner Spada, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wostel. Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Leinhardt, is that, that was the final?
Yes, ma'am, no, no, we have two more, A15 and A16, but they're also going to be presented by Ms. Carla Yanoz and Ms. Alexis Myers in the same way that we just did the others. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, this is the last one, so it'll be a few minutes. HCCPA 24-13. This one's located on North Bishop Road and County Road 579. Next slide. Again, this is a privately initiated comprehensive plan text amendment on 505 acres. This does expand the urban service boundary area, and it's also associated with HCCPA 24-13. Next slide, please. So again, we saw the other two properties. You see 2407 in the middle, you have 2409 down to the south. Now we're looking at 2413, which is the northernmost area. Again, this one has a little bit more of a border along the urban service boundary, which is right off of Bishop Road, running northeast towards the West Lake area. Again, this is it. Alexis will go over the map amendment.
Hey, thank you, Carla. Good afternoon, Commissioners, again, Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I am here to present HCCPA 2412, located at North Bishop Road and County Road 579. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that is large in scale and approximately 505 acres. Currently, the future land use designation is Wamama Village Residential Two and Natural Preservation. And the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to residential four. Here we have the general location map. This amendment is in the, I'm sorry, the rural service area. This amendment is also within the limits of the Wamama Village and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. It is located south of Bishop Road and west of County Road 579. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and then the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. There is agricultural on the site as well as to the south. There is also wetlands, significant wildlife, and it is also in the FEMA flood zone AE. There are also single-family uses to the west. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is Wamama Village Residential Two and Natural Preservation. Other future land use designations shown on this map include residential four and residential six, which are just within the urban service area to the north. Again, the applicant is proposing to change the future land use designation to residential four. Here we have the impacts. Overall, the proposed amendment will result in an increase of density, and it will also introduce suburban scale commercial and residential while eliminating community benefits. And this concludes my presentation, presentation, and Carla and I are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, no questions, Ms. Leinhardt?
That concludes our agenda this afternoon, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. If there's no other questions for discussion, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.